If you can, please. Thank you all for being here tonight. Nice to see you. Welcome and hello for joining us this evening for our monthly town meeting. I'm Nancy Car Smith, the president of the Wayne MIA Community Association. And I'd like to introduce the rest of the forum. Our vice president, Mary Beth Lecheck, is on the island. Our treasurer, Victor Maum. With us, our secretary, Lonnie Olson-Chong. Who could not be here tonight. Our directors are Riley Smith. Patty Clark and Michaela are. David Greenwell will be our official timer team. So keep your eye on David. Presenting. Chris Wong. Official photographer right now. Ryan Muschichima. And Leland Hart is here working IT with our favorite friend James Houston, who we both let go of. Because we need him. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. We're streaming live on our Facebook page as well as on our YouTube channel, which can be found on our website when you attend the forum. The recording will be made available for later viewing. Happy to have those of you here who can join us in person. Thank you for taking the time. If you haven't already done so, we encourage you to become a member of WCA. You can do that at the sign-in desk with the ladies. Also on our website or by mailing a check to our email box, which is on the agenda. We appreciate your support. We're always grateful to be here at KEP. And you guys are always such a generous host, Rich though.
Right here.
There you are. So let me introduce Rich Mansuda, director here at KEP, who would like to say.
Thanks Nancy. Just a couple of words. So just want to always remind when we have a public meeting here that KEP is here because of the generous gift of Richard Smart, who was the owner of Parker Ranch. And the reason he gave us this land to do our mission on was to bring opportunities to the community, whether that's economic opportunities or educational opportunities. So we're really happy to host this meeting. And one of the ways we fulfill that hulianna is through sharing our science. So I just wanted to mention a three public talk coming up on July 15th, Monday. Starts at six, doors open at 5:30 at Kakeelu. This is Andrea Ghez talking about black holes. Research that was done from Mauna Kea. And couldn't be possible without the Mauna. And she won the Nobel Prize in 2020. So please come up and join in on the talk if you were interested in that. Another way we help out the community is by hosting meetings like this. And so we're just really happy to have you here. For tonight's agenda, I was really happy to hear that we're covering reforestation and watershed, because if you live and work in Wayne MIA, then we have an impact, right? So what can we do to restore, what can we do for Mauna? And I just wanted to show a quick picture. I had a fun day today on Mauna Kea planting Mauna trees. And with Cassie, who is one of the people that will be talking tonight on Zoom. And I just wanted to say that one of the things we did when we stuffed the seedlings in the ground was to say, "I live where you live so that we may live." And I think that's a good way to frame our relationship in the community to each other and to Ina. And so I just leave you with that one and welcome you here to KEP and have a great meeting. So thank you.
I saw somewhere today online that KEP captured the eruption last week.
Oh yeah.
That was cool. Could just barely see it coming up. Thank you very much. All right. As we continue our tradition of honoring and respecting the various faith-based groups that make up our community, we welcome tonight Pastor Mike Pai from Inspired Church, formerly, it's in the location of the Dorofaid Church on Kuaia Row. Thanks, Mike, for being here. We know you have a service tonight, so please come down.
Aloha, everybody. What a privilege and an honor it is to be here today. I wish I could stay to talk about the watershed and just to hear the discussion. So important. For context, just before I pray, I'm born and raised in Kualaka, right down the road. Shout out to the cats of 85 Dragons. I spent some time to see our men and women. We appreciate them. I spent about 10 minutes in one of those cells being segregated at the age of 17. Get to the truth, the booth actually driving the car from Habuna when we were having shenanigans. And so thank you, so privileged and honored. My dad was a police officer for over 22 years in Kualaka. So grew up here, love this place and a privilege to be here today, to be able to offer the hulianna. So maybe our heads in prayer. Our gracious heavenly father, we just, we thank you for this most beautiful island. And in the middle of the Pacific, you decided that you would pop up these incredible islands where we would not be found for centuries. And God, I thank you that in the middle of these islands is the most beautiful town in the entire state. And so Father, we ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We ask for the blessing of the watershed. Father, we thank you for the life-giving vibe, the water that comes from you. God, I pray for your wisdom in talking about this. I pray that there would be great wisdom and manaho as we begin to share. Father, we thank you for the agenda, but would you supersede the agenda? And Lord, would you overtake the agenda of our lives as well? And so, Lord, we honor you today. We offer this time to you and we give you all the praise, all the glory and all the honor in the name of Ei Se Prisso, Jesus Christ. And everybody said, amen. Thank you, everybody. God bless you. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mike. Appreciate it. All right, next we'll have our update from the police department here in Wayne MIA. Community policing officer, Justin Beckham. And we, we don't produce this with you tonight, as well as Lieutenant Amuiya Moya.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much. I know we got our five-minute block. Our captain wanted to be here, but instead our lieutenant, Lieutenant Amuiya, who also transferred here. So and also. So real quick, the newsletter hasn't gone out yet. I will go shortly, so please take a look. Be interested in getting it. Come see myself or come see Nancy or James, they can get you on the newsletter. Call of Duty Cop is going to be on Thursday, the 13th, next week. And that's going to be at Country Grounds. So like I said, we try to move all over the place. And lastly, Father Day coming up, please celebrate safely and responsibly. And happy Father Day to all of our little friends. I'll quickly go over the crime stats for the month of May for South Florida this year. We had five assault investigations, three burglaries. All the burglaries were actually not private residences, they were businesses. We had six property damages, we had zero robberies. We did have 16 deaths though, compared to nine, 19 of last year. We did have zero stolen vehicles reported in our district, but we did have five unauthorized entries. So somebody broke into somebody else's vehicle, probably took something. We did have six major incidents in our district. I'll give the mic forward to Officer, please go to the private.
Real quickly. The patrol officers here in South Florida continue to do an outstanding job with citations. It's not a side note, I don't know if you guys knew, but our mission usually leads in citations from all of the divisions. So the patrol officers here are really doing their 26th and stuff, you know, whoever's involved. Little example, last year at this time, they gave out 144 citations. Last month, they gave up 306 citations. Continue to, like I said, do an outstanding job. There are eight major traffic accidents that usually cause injuries or like damage to the car. Five of those happened early morning hours between 4:00 AM and 7:00 AM. One of those was a dog ever. But of course, we always have one traffic accident with those, one of those friendly ghosts that we have on the side of the road. They're completely totally weird ghosts. But that's the little traffic puppy. Better than whiskey?
Yeah. Hi, aloha, everybody. Happy to be here. Our captain couldn't make this on. I am honored and happy to be here and meet everybody. All of the honors that we do at our desk of community media services. I will continue to our work and keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate you guys more than you know. All right. We're going to move on to community announcements. So we all go through these rather quickly. Yes, there we go. Wayne MIA Arts Council and Parker School will host Camp Play from June 10th to the 14th at Parker School. This is open to ages 10 and up. Wayne MIA Middle School is offering a summer tech program between June 10th and June 21st, and this is for grades four through eight. Annunciation Food Pantry will have two distributions this month, June 8th and 25th, while this applies to last. The Hawaii Youth Rodeo is looking forward to their team travel fundraising golf tournament on June 15th at Mauna Loa. Limited spots are remaining, but this is a great opportunity to support these folks. North Hawaii Hospice is also holding their benefit golf tournament at Mauna Loa on June 18th. So lots of golf that week for youth folks that want to support these nonprofits. Wayne MIA Family Food Truck Friday will be on June 21st this month, hosted here at KEP. Organized and sponsored by Napa Coffee and Dance. The 45th Annual Charity Walk, which was postponed due to that storm, will now take place on June 22nd at Wailea Beach. Lots of great nonprofits there to support. The Stop the Bleed Training on Friday, the 28th of June at Anna Ranch. This is a life-saving class. It's free with limited spaces. You do need to sign up and it's sponsored by Queens, Anna Ranch, the Resilience Hub and CERT. I signed up today. Thanks, Debbie. Be an ocean steward by helping with a summer cleanup at Kuaia Surf Park. That's on July 6th. And then the Hawaii County CERT Program, the Community Emergency Response Team. They'll hold their next hands-on portion of their training in July, the 29th. Did I write that correctly? Maybe it's the 20th and the 21st in Kohala. Their program, they take a two-day online course and then two days hands-on. So they've made it so it's simpler for all of us to do. And last, please join us next month at our town meeting for the primary election candidates forum. WCA has been putting on these forums for years and years and years. And this year, we're inviting 15 candidates total. There's seven mayoral candidates. There's two state rep running in District Eight. There are three running for County Council District One and three for County Council District Nine. So this will be at Kakeelu Town Hall between 5:00 and 8:00. So we hope to see you there. And that's it on that. Is he ready to roll? Right in the door and on up here. So every month, we highlight a nonprofit. And since June is Pride Month, we are honoring equity, equality. I'm sorry, I always want to say equity, equality in Hawaii. And we will be passing the basket after this presentation. So be forewarned of that. We want to take the opportunity to honor the LGBTQ members of our community. We respect and honor diversity and support members of our community who are celebrating Pride Month. So with us tonight is president of the organization, Ray Saludaris.
Yes.
And Mark Lorby, our friend that always comes to our meetings. Please come tell us about your position.
Yeah, thank you very much for having us and happy Pride Month where we all are in that true loop. We'll just kind of thought we're going to be a hilo pride at the end of June. That's the last Saturday. So we will be there having a movie and so on. I have recently become involved in Paul's Law. And probably about three, four months. And I was interested in going to a group as growing up as a strong Christian family where being gay was very negative. And I was even going to hell, the typical stereotypes, things like that. It was difficult. And when I originally saw equality Hawaii, I was interested in what your information is about. So I had contacted one of the other board members, Mar. And I had, they were going to do a program for mentorship. Mentors, and these were not necessarily youth, they were people of 20s and so on. Maybe people dealing with coming out, religious issues and other ones. And I thought this would be a good experience for me as being gay, going through some of the same struggles as these other people. And I had applied for the mentorship program. Unfortunately, I wasn't chosen this time, but we did have a membership program with Ben and Hilo with them. And it was very successful. So I began equality Hawaii and Hawaii equality was different. Equality Hawaii is different than equality California. You might have heard about equality California, but that was, and we lived in the area of, and I'm here, my partner John and I live another time in there, and part of Hawaii was to promote rights at work, marriage equality and so on. And I immediately thought equality Hawaii was one of the same. But they're not, they were not part of a main organization. Not saying we went through similar things to equality Hawaii. I mean, equality, you know, national, but our whole is still, it was more on the service organization. Assisting, working with other organizations. Equality Hawaii has done a lot for the people in Puna. And a lot of times having things like that, you know, helping people with resiliency, halos and so on in Puna. So it's been a very good reward. I wouldn't be surprised, he has three months on his medical degree.
All right, thank you, Mark. So yeah, Mark was saying, equality Hawaii, we've been, we've been around for about four years now. And the Incorporated is a nonprofit for about three, those four years. And our services, our core mission is actually services. So living here in Hilo, because I grew up in Hilo and I'm a big Hilo. And we're in a, there was no LGBT services here. Everything was definitely a law center. You know, so was services, was there for LGBT people here? And there was none. So a bunch of us guys just kind of started talking and kind of figuring out what is there that we want to do. So we decided to start a nonprofit. And we did. It was more, more work than I care to make to me. But it was, it was a lot of challenges in those early years. Trying to work in the IRS, getting our documents together and all that kind of stuff. And over the past three years, we have grown in terms of what we're able to do. We were awarded several branches of the years. During the pandemic, we ended up doing a virtual resource fair where we were able to provide information and resources to over 300 people. And there's about 50 people who actually access those services after the conference. We did a mentorship resiliency program, that's what Mar was talking about. And more recently, we have a community residency. And this is actually still going on and we will be doing a, trying to get the community and we want to come back out of, starting to reconnect with children to the food. So right now, really, our biggest focus is getting that off the ground and also looking at a strategic initiative, which is finding us a permanent home space. Looking at how to strengthen our infrastructure and things like that. But we're definitely looking also to probably strategically expand outside of Hilo. And showing me through connections with folks in our rural communities and also in. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Appreciate it. Nancy.
Nancy, how do we contact them?
Sorry?
How do we contact them?
How do we contact them?
Oh, equality, equality pi dot.
Equality pi dot.
Thank you.
And Chris and Michaela, can you please start passing the basket? Patty, go ahead. Yep, the agenda says.
Oh, that's why it was in my mind exactly. That's made of chum. If I was saying equality Hawaii.
It's equality. Yeah. Very good. Thank you. Best of luck growing your organization. All right, now for the main part of the meeting, please welcome our member Riley Smith. We need the main portion here as we learn about reforestation projects in our community as well as effects on our watershed, what needs to be done to keep the watershed healthy.
Welcome, everybody, this evening. You know, we're honored to have a number of experts, many of them born and raised on Oa Island. I always understand how important forests are, because if a lot of us want to go around the ocean, then that would be an experience in the ocean. It starts by taking care of what's up in the mountains, making sure that the watershed is replenished, making sure that silation and erosion is minimized. And that's what these folks here do. So we have a lot of experts. What I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce and give a little information about each of them. And then we're going to have them come up here and give their presentation. Each of them have PowerPoints that they will share what they do. First of all, I'm going to introduce Nick Agarasas. Nick is the Natural Resources Management Specialist, five program manager of the State Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Forestry and Wildlife. He is responsible for managing and protecting the natural area reserve system, island-wise. He will share what specific projects the state is working on in our area. He will share the challenges and opportunities found, as well as talk about the state tree nursery in La Mila and how far-reaching it is. Nick was born at Maui, raised on Oa Island, graduated from Hawaii Preparedory Academy, also the University of Hawaii in Manoa, and lives with his wife and daughter in Wayne MIA. Next to Nick is Zach Judd. Zach is a forester with Parker Ranch. He will share the ranch's management plan in terms of reforestation, increasing their forestry footprint, helping to improve groundwater recharge, replenish, to replenish our aquifer and also to control invasive species. He also helps to build a forestry economy while balancing the need for trees and the productive use of the lands for Parker Ranch's livestock, for the stream. In and of, presided Wayne MIA. Next, we have Mahina Patterson. Mahina is the coordinator for the Kohala Watershed Partnership. She will discuss their stewardship of the Kohala watershed area and share what their hulianna looks like. Mahina is a graduate of the University of Hawaii Hilo, and I found out that she's also graduated, maybe a student of Wauwaiu campus. Cassandra Talamantins, she is the Mauna Kea Forest Restoration Project Coordinator. She will be addressing the restoration of areas that fall under the Department of Land and Natural Resources Division of Forestry and Wildlife. She will explain this project that she. She will explain this project that she's working on, which is focused on protecting the puliana bird, which is a critically endangered Hawaiian honey free bird and its typical habitat of a honey forest that exists in our region. Cassandra is a graduate of the University of Hoi Keelok. Next, and she's gonna be on this real quick. Next, we have Kellye Stone. Kellye is a beneficiary of Richard Smart Funds and is involved with Waimea Community Williams Hui. It will be introducing the third spaces prototype hui that was planted by Kellye and other Waimea community volunteers. This hui is working to understand and encourage more public spaces for residents and creating volunteer efforts and including planting native trees in public outdoor spaces that we all love. Kellye was born in Kohala, graduated from a family that's books, but alone. Graduated from University of San Francisco, University of San Francisco. Our last presenter this evening is Alex Woodbury, I think maybe you've known him. Alex has done a number of good things in his career. He's been a whole inspector of his father. He's currently the president of Kaua Hardwoods, a joint venture with Parker Ranch. At Kaua Hardwoods, they utilize itself and produce many different types of unfinished manufactured wood products all locally sourced from Hoi Island. He's a graduate of Hoi Preparatory Academy and also Western Washington University. He is founding, resides in Waimea. Okay, so before we start, I just want to remind everybody, David Greenwell is the timer. Please pay attention to David, you don't want to get him upset. And by honoring our time commitment, then everybody will have a time or a chance to answer, ask questions with him. So Nick, if you want to come up, start with you. And each of them have a PowerPoint and we'll be advancing this one.
Good evening. I had the pleasure of taking Nancy and Chris and Riley out to the field for a site visit to kind of give them a taste of what we do the other day. That took five hours and it was just a kind of a blip on the screen, so trying to do this in 10 minutes is gonna be kind of tough. The other part of it is, is I'm not used to speaking in front of crowds. But when you put me in the forest, I'm like a little bird and I can't show. Alright, so I'll do my best here and try not to steal the thunder of my, my mates over here. Anyway, this is an ongoing presentation that I've been working on for a couple of years. This is a picture of a fire in Hawaii Volcanoes National Park in Kaua Hardwoods in Kaua district, 2018. This was our third fire of the season and they were back to back to back. And the title of my thing obviously is patience when time is not on our side. So we'll be talking about a little bit of restoration stuff that we work on. And the other part of what we do, Mahina will follow up with that, I think.
Thank you. Put the mic.
Oh, sorry. Okay, uh, next slide. One of the things that we're working on, and this is a philosophy that I was explaining to them, we want, is we do practice of paths of restoration and it's basically utilizing what we're given and the areas that we're working in and utilizing the fullness while trying to make use of our limited resources, personnel, things like that. And one of the projects that's common to almost all of our restoration sites is that we're usually starting with pastures. Former pastures and former forests and stuff that have, for some reason, come into our responsibility and so we're tasked with trying to make forests out of areas that have been degraded for various reasons. And so one of the projects I'm gonna talk to, talk about is upon Uluva proper, where we've been doing some restoration work off and on. A lot of our restoration work is, I don't want to call it pet projects, but that's almost what they are. It's when we have time available or we have the opportunity to engage the public. Next slide. Basically, it starts, and a lot of these things are, you know, running around my mind as we're working out there on the land for years and years and years and you get to recognize what areas are important, what areas lend themselves well to making the most of a particular situation and being opportunistic. And these are just some of the, the things that we'll evaluate in that process. And again, it's ongoing, this is years in the making, trying to figure out knowing what our abilities are, what our opportunities are, seeking funding and then waiting for that funding to materialize. And it's, you know, but with a lot of this stuff, it's, it's spent just by being out there on the land. Next slide. One of the things that I like to talk with that is a reduction in the use of herbicides. Herbicides are very, a necessity in, in, in my line of work. Without it, we can't do our job. That said, anytime that we can reduce putting herbicides out on the land and exposure to my workers, my coworkers, and then the cost saving step is something that's really important to it. And then identifying what trees we're gonna use is one of the things that I was highlighting with them is we work with our nursery staff to develop the right tree for the right place. And in the project that I'll show in a few slides, our infrastructure tree was tall. But in one of our other projects here on Koala Mountain Road, it is Hawaia, because there is no natural koala on Koala Mountain, not anymore. And so it's, it's again, evaluating the tools that you have and putting forth the right tool. Next slide, please. So this is just a snapshot of the things that we've been able to do. The change in forest canopy that we see is mainly done each year with some staff and engaging our youth conservation corps. So each year, youth conservation corps or any other volunteer group that would come, come along would help with the seed production, collection, processing, and then they would also be involved in the planting. So they get to see the fruits of their labors. They're out there, they can see what previous groups have done and it's a build-in even more since then. But there's so much more to do. Next slide, please. That's just another, this is some high, high-tech imagery that's come out of the Forest Service. But the, the important part for here is you might say, why, why don't we plant more trees? The best use of our tax dollars is spent protecting forests that are already in really good shape. We, some of those places are hard to reach. But I, I've never done the cost analysis, but it's on a factor of higher than 10, you know, a factor of 10. It may be as high as a factor of 1,000. When you consider all the costs and all the services that are provided by a section of forest that is somewhat intact. Basically, what we'll do and Mahina is likely to talk a little bit about it is we'll go in, we'll identify the areas that are most important. And here in Kohala, those are the summit regions where all of our streams emanate from. And over the last 20 years, basically, we highlighted the areas, identified them, fenced them, work on going in there, controlling things like kahili ginger or peyote folks or as what we like to refer to as Himalayan ginger. Removing any kinds of ungulates, pigs, feral cattle, things like that and restore the functions that you can normally find in the forest. We've seen results that just have blown us away at how quickly things can recover. And Zach and I have worked on a few projects over the years that neither of us could have imagined how quickly things responded to the management that we put into it. Next slide, please. One of the things that I like to talk about is let trees do what they do best and grow. And it's about being patient. And one of the things that's gonna be a little bit different between some of the tops is the trees that we put in the ground, we want them to stand the test of time. I'm not looking for timber production, I'm not looking for the koala that's gonna grow 20 feet in 20 days. I want something that's gonna go with the droughts that come, be able to support itself, handle the wind events that, you know, show up and just be resilient in, in time. Next slide, please. I'm just gonna kind of whip through these because time's coming through, but these are just some of the other things that we'll evaluate to try and figure out what we're gonna plant and where we're gonna plant it. Next slide. And weed management, man. Weeds and other invasive species are one of the biggest challenges and there's a new one every, every day. But it's really taking a hard look at, at what our practices are, what can we actually do? And then that's probably part of the reason why we focus where we do is we start with the good stuff and then work our way down to the stuff that's more challenging. I spoke a little bit about this and unfortunately, I don't know that I'll have enough time to talk about the nursery and its role and everything, but it's the relationship between the people that grow our trees, the types of trees that we select. And then that influences the success of our, of our projects and programs. Next slide. This is something that I, I struggle with a lot. But as you see, these are just two of our species that we use, ohelehua and pulela launui. But I really like to look at what we're doing as restoration. Gardening is something that you'll do on a very small scale and one of my duties is to really try and make a bigger impact in what we're doing. And one of the things is if we're protecting 1,000 acres, my job is to put another zero on end of that. Turn it into 10,000, so on and so forth. If we're planting 100, 100,000 trees, I need to get that up to a million. So that's, that's kind of where we're headed and it's trying to get to. Next. And I'm out of time.
Next, I'd like to ask Zach Judd, Zach is a forester at Parker Ranch.
Thank you, Randy. Much like Nick, I'm not very good in front of people, I much prefer the trees. Quick introduction to foreign names of Hoi Island, graduated from my schools and the University of Hoi Keelok. And I spent a lot of time, a few years working in and amongst the wildlife and the forest. We are positioned at Fremont Alliance Koala Watership Partnership, the National Air Reserve Program, and now for Parker Ranch. As you know, Parker Ranch was founded in 1847 and since 1992 has been in a charitable trust whose mission is to maintain and improve the equality of life in Waimea by providing perpetual support for designated musicians. Next slide. Currently, the ranch encompasses approximately 110,000 acres in North Hoi, spread across the Ha'oula, Solakala and North Koala districts. So all that approximately 10,000 acres are in some sort of tree cover, ranging from impact native forests to monocultive ripolitis and almost everything in between. By 2017, ranch management decided to internalize management of many of its forestry assets with the hiring of its first forestry manager. And I was, given the opportunity in 2021, 2021, to take over that role. And I was given the goal of doubling our current forestry footprint, so adding another 10,000 acres. Next slide. The ranch, we're currently managing our forests for a wide range of values. Not focused on one particular value such as conservation or watershed goals, but blend in values to maximize productivity and health of the forest landscape in the long term. And tonight, I'm focusing on the three E's, the environmental, ecological and economic values that forests provide. Excellent. Same people at Parker Ranch and Waimea would not be in existence without the Koala Watership and the environmental value that it provides. There is a direct connection of the health of the forest landscapes to the availability of the talented water, its food, its cultural resources, its recreation and unparalleled business fund. Excellent. Forests also provide a tremendous ecological value across the landscape, the most iconic of which are native forest birds, which rely on these forests to survive. While these birds are important, they are just one of hundreds, if not thousands, of species that rely on these forests. In the context of our ranch, forests also provide tremendous ecological value to our livestock and vice versa when grazing is managed correctly for the benefit of overall forest health. This is a very important aspect that we must balance at the ranch as we seek to expand forest cover across the landscape. Mutual ecological benefit between forests and grazing operations. Next slide. And finally, as a private business, we must manage our forests for the economic value that they provide. We are blessed to have some of the best growing conditions anywhere on the planet and also blessed with the fact that some of our native species produce the highest value load. To that end, we are in the process of developing a local wood economy here in Waimea to diversify the ranch's income stream, diversify the local economy with the creation of a professional forestry community and create a circular economy where selective harvesting of timber can independently support forestry efforts. Forests are as diverse, complex and ever-changing as our oceans. We must continually adjust our management efforts to maintain a wide range of forest values. And this is especially important as our climate is changing. Next slide. During that time here at the ranch, we've been focused on increasing our capacity to manage forests as well as expanding the local forestry sector. We currently have three full-time staff members whose primary role is forestry management. In addition, in 2021, the ranch formed a joint venture with Kamala Hardwoods, a local summoning business to expand production and provide an avenue for sustainably grown timber to be processed as a wood products. Additionally, my, my position has been focused on project development across the land portfolio of the ranch to identify and plan for a wide range of forestry projects. Next slide. The last 18 months have seen the start of a substantial reforestation and forest management effort spread across four different individual projects on the ranch. Since our boots on the ground activities began, we planted just under 34,000 seedlings and we've done 575 acres of weed control in watershed areas. These metrics only represent direct efforts by the ranch and our contractors and are in addition to the substantial efforts of Koala Watership Partnership and Department of Land and Natural Resources. Next slide. One of our first full plantings was with a group of our preschool students in April of last year, just off of Mono Road in the high boy section of the ranch. Some of you may have driven past it. We had about 10 students come through, planted about 400 koala seedlings. This next photo is, sorry, next slide, was taken by Nancy Latvija. And that's, that's 13 months later. To be honest, I have pretty low expectations, you know, and a bunch of students on our first planting, but the growth of these trees has been tremendous. I will be upfront, this area is intended to be a production forest, but also greatly increased watershed environment and habitat value of the area for many decades. This will also be the focus of our first civil path through trial with Koala, where we're gonna introduce managed grazing back into the landscape in our restoration areas. The integration of livestock grazing and trees is the most important key to getting large portions of forest back in the landscape. Koala and koala can exist, we just need to figure out how to do it. Next slide. I'm gonna whip through these because I'm almost out of time. There's another large planting effort last month, 1,500 ohele seedlings. These got planted in North Koala in a jointly managed project with it in Mars. Next slide. Active management of invasive species in existing forests is also a large component of the work we do. This map shows our main forestry area and each of those squiggly lines is a GPS track by one of our staff members going through and treating invasive species. There's numerous species found throughout our native forests that are ecosystems altering. There's numerous species found throughout our native forests, uh, that are ecosystems altering. And unfortunately, as Nick alluded to, more and more, uh, introduced each year. Next slide. These next two photos show one of the most invasive ferns employed, the Australian tree fern. Uh, these fast green ferns out compete many of our native species, forming, forming monotonic stand with parasol and. Uh, next slide. This is the same area following treatment. Uh, it's hard to see here, but there's hundreds of stems per acre, um, and almost no recruitment of native species on them. Excuse me. Next slide. Uh, these next two slides are gonna seem a bit misplaced when we talk, uh, we're talking mainly about watershed expansion, but I think it's important to note that chainsaw can be a tool for forest conservation. Uh, this is a naturally regenerated standard for that is ultra-high density, often referred to as Bel Air For. Okay, one minute left. Um, so much so that they're competing with each other and at least the forest stagnation. Uh, we're developing thinning protocols in these types of forests to release some of these trees from competition with the increasing growth, uh, overall forest health. It's akin to, uh, too many vegetables in your garden and not really producing, uh, good vegetables. So it's just a series of photos of that thinning process and allowing these, uh, prop trees or, or final selected trees to grow out from dirt. Next slide. As we look forward to meeting our reforestation goals in the long term, uh, we must remember that forests need to be managed and as we expand our forests, we must expand our forests, our capacity to manage them for a wide range of values. A unique aspect of our forestry operation is our ability to leverage several opportunities, including production forestry and agro- forestry techniques across the landscape. We're driven by observation and response to the changing environment, innovation of new techniques and the desire to enhance the ability to allow support of volunteers. Thanks.
Mahina in the coordinator for the Quahola Watership Partnership.
Aloha, I'm Mahina Patterson. Good evening, everyone. Uh, again, I'm Mahina Patterson. I am born and raised in Longoria. Um, I grew up on the website of Longoria. I grew up playing outside, cruising pastures, playing in the streams and the Kohala watershed really was my backyard and my playground as a child. And I truly believe it's because of those experiences that I'm standing here before all of you today, um, as the coordinator of this Kohala Watership Partnership, a position I've had for about two years now. And, um, I will be sharing about the partnership today and our work to protect and sustain the forest waters and people of Kohala Mountain. So Kohala Mountain is our source of water. It's a native forest functions like a sponge, which, um, we can really see in, in this particular photo. Um, and that sponge captures rain and fog and recharges our streams and groundwater. And, uh, then the streams and the groundwater, uh, provide our drinking water for north and south Kohala as well as parts of Kamakua. Um, surface water from Kohala Mountain also provides agricultural irrigation water to farms through ditch systems. And, um, as Zach shared, private ranches also rely on the water of Kohala as do the Kohala farmers of Mahina River Valley. Beyond being our source of water, Kohala Mountain is, is also special because it's like no other place on earth as you see, um, in these photos. Uh, Kohala Mountain is rich in biological resources, unique ecosystems and rare and endangered plant and animal species. Um, from the windward coastal beaches you see in these photos to the mountain bogs of the summit region, from the diverse mountain wet forests to remnant dry forests that are still remaining in the pastures and vultures of Leirik Kohala. Which brings us to the Kohala Watershed Partnership. The Kohala Watershed Partnership is a voluntary group of eight major landowning partners and three associate partners. Uh, we were established in two thousand and three, just over twenty years ago, to work collaboratively across land ownership boundaries to improve the quantity and quality of water supply in, of water supplies in Kohala by protecting, um, our remaining native forests from threats. And we are also a project of the University of Hoi at Manoa Specific Cooperative Studies Unit. Uh, this is the map of the Kohala Watershed Partnership area or our watershed management area, the, the area of where we focus our work. It's approximately sixty-eight thousand acres of forest and grassland on the windward and leeward slopes of Kohala Mountain. Uh, it follows Kohala Mountain Road, wraps over towards Pololu, follows the windward coastline, uh, then up Hoi Kea Valley, uh, encompasses the Puukapu section of the Kohala watershed and then finally follows the Southern Forest Reserve boundary. Um, and our members include the, um, Department of Land and the State of Hawaii, Department of Land and Natural Resources, um, the Department of Point Homeland, uh, Kapua Ranch, La Kaniua Ranch, Kama Mahu, Local Hoi Koi Nui LLC, Parker Ranch, Kona Polo Ranch, uh, Queen Emma Land Company and our associate partners, our non-landowning partners that offer um, support and technical expertise to our partnership include the, uh, County of Hoi Department of Water Supply, uh, the Nature Conservancy and more recently the Kohala Center. Um, and uh, one thing I'll point out on this map or, and I would like to mention is that, um, both Zach and Nick are members of our executive committee uh, and about fifty percent of the lands in the Kohala watershed area is, uh, is state land. And ten thousand acres of that land is a natural area reserve, which means that it's a very unique, uh, healthy native forest and native ecosystems, um, across the state. Um, and so the NARS program does, oh, does a lot of work, um, within the Kohala watershed because of that. And so KWP is guided by a twenty-year management plan that was written in two thousand and seven. It defines threats to the watershed and prescribes actions to address them. Um, part of our management strategy includes fencing about fifteen percent or thirteen thousand acres of the total land area of the open watershed to keep out non-native pup animals and protect native species. Uh, pictured below, you'll see, um, photos of the various threats to our watershed, the top threat being feral pigs. Um, and, uh, which you can kind of see that, you can see the impact that feral pigs have on our forests in the picture on the far left where we have an area, um, with, uh, with and without, um, feral pigs. So photos of our fence signs are really great to see the, the difference between, um, protected and managed areas and unprotected areas. Um, we also have a photo here of of rapid Okeeta, um, in, in Kohala, um, on this particular pool where over ninety percent of the Okeeta, um, have, have died um, due to this disease. Um, and our pigs are a part of spreading rapid Okeeta death as well. And then finally, as Nick mentioned, uh, one of the top threats, uh, in the Kohala watershed is the uh, Himalayan ginger or locally referred to as crafty ginger. Oh, I'm sorry. You've been changing it. Um, thank you. Uh, so our management goals are to protect water resources to prevent new introductions and control existing invasive plant species, control non-native animal populations within designated areas, protect unique biological communities and rare species, prevent and minimize wildfire, manage access for compatible use and finally provide effective administrative coordination and infrastructure. Okay. And our major management actions related to these goals include fencing, a lot of what you heard earlier, fencing, feral animal removal, invasive species control, outplanting and restoration, monitoring and surveys, research and infrastructure support and maintenance. And again, here's the photo that I showed earlier. It's just a larger, so hopefully you can see it better of, of what it looks like, what, what the difference that effect could make and the difference that, um, that protection and management can make for our native forests. Okay. And then this is a map of our, uh, our priority projects. It's not comprehensive. It doesn't represent all of the work that's been done in the past uh, or the work to come, but what it represents is the projects that we're working on currently, that we currently have funding for uh, and that we'll be focusing on over these next couple of years. There's a variety of projects on, uh, Leirik and Windward Kohala. Some are restoration focused, some are bio, bio diversity conservation units and some are, um, areas that are important as, uh, water, uh, water recharge zones or, um, high yield of watershed areas. Hey, and I'm gonna focus on one, um, project in particular called the Quiet A Corridor. Um, many of you are probably familiar with the Quiet A Corridor. It is, um, it is accessible and close in proximity to Longoria, um, and it is open to the public. And so, um, this particular, um, project is a collaborative project, um, uh, amongst KWP and its members, including Department of Land and Natural Resources, specifically the Natural Area Reserve Program, uh, Queen Emma Land Company, Parker Ranch, Kohala Center and countless community volunteers, some of who are here today, um, over the years. It was fenced in two thousand and nine and then extended in twenty eighteen. It's about two hundred and forty-five acres of a, a riparian corridor. It extends from the Umi Natural Area Reserve down towards the Quiet A Tree Sanctuary and encompasses the streams of Waifamali'i and Luahine. And the primary, uh, purpose of this project is, is to protect and enhance those particular streams uh, through forest restoration, um, through outplanting and weed control. And, um, something super exciting that we're working on over the next couple of years is that we are working with the Natural Area Reserve Program to plant uh, over ten thousand Okeeta trees, um, in the Quiet A Corridor, which, um, also will help us to calm that rapid Okeeta death in this region. And so here's a photo of folks planting those trees, um, and what some of those seedlings look like, as well as what the corridor looks like. And I'm just about out of time. So with that, uh, Mahalali Loa, uh, please contact me if you're interested in volunteering or getting involved in some way or if you have questions or wanna talk story more, my email is hoi p at hoi.edu.
Next, we have, we're gonna allow Cassandra to comment to join in the ceremony.
Hello, everyone. Aloha. Uh, my name is Cassandra Talamontes. I am the restoration technician for Monique A. Forest Restoration Project. And I'm super happy to be here. Sorry I can't be there in person, but, um, I bring my coworkers with me today and yeah, let me share my screen. Let's see. Are you guys able to see my screen by any chance?
Not yet.
Okay. So sorry. Well, hopefully we can get that up and running.
Well, there's, there's cookies and G town coffee and water over here, folks, if you are ever going.
Okay. How about now? Are you guys able to see? So sorry. Yay. Okay. Awesome. Okay. Can you guys see my starting screen?
Yes, thanks, Cassandra.
Perfect. Okay. So sorry for the technical difficulties. Okay. So to start off, um, I'm gonna just talk about like a nutshell about our project and then some twenty twenty-four updates that we've been having so far this year. So to go over our project, uh, Monique A. Forest Restoration Project is a nonprofit that began in two thousand and seven following the nineteen eighty-eight lawsuit between Palila versus the Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources. Our project's primary goals include restoring critical habitat and food sources for the critically endangered Hawaiian honey creeper Palila, which is photographed to the right, um, to remove and manage invasive predators to native manu, which in covers all birds, not just Palila, and that includes feral cats, mongooses and rats. And we also want to provide the community with outreach opportunities to connect with Monique A. Um, as Rich said earlier, we did an outreach today and we planted Mamane up by Halepohaku. I was able to sneak in the shower, so I was happy about that. And then to kind of go over our reforestation efforts that we've done so far, um, we have planted over eleven thousand native plants for our spring season. And this is possible with the assistance we received from our volunteers. So we're super grateful for them. Um, our spring goal was to plant trees to assist in fire prevention and for future seed breaks. Um, so right here on the side, um, we were able to plant over three thousand Mamane and we also planted over seven thousand Koa. And for our fall season, which will begin in August, which like Mahina said, we always love to have more volunteers. So if you guys are interested, definitely hit me up. Um, we hope to provide more native plants within Pu'umali unit. And we also want to provide outreach opportunities for the community. Um, and then we want to continue to plant at higher elevations for future forests for our native manu. And we also want to collect and process more seeds for future outplantings. To cover a little bit of the predator control that has been happening, this is an image of our traps that we have up around Monique A. As you can see, it's a lot, but our project traps around the majority of Monique A with the goal to prevent invasive predators from reaching our Palila core habitat. So if you look at the screen, you'll see this orange area that is Palila detections that we have had from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Um, and this is our Palila core habitat that we focus on protecting. And these traps are on scheduled checks and rebates so that they stay active during bird hunting off-season. And the list of types of traps we use are A twenty-four good natures, carnivore body grips, dock traps and occasionally live traps. And again, the target species we're mainly focused on are invasive predators that do affect Palila, which is feral cats, mongooses and rats. And some cool little information we had, um, data from these traps has shown a decrease in the density of predators caught within the Palila core habitat. And this is correlated to the removal of predators lower than the Palila core habitat. So although we do have a lot of traps lower than the orange section, having these traps and trapping, um, since two thousand and seven has allowed us to reach a lower density of invasive predators within that habitat and it's been really good. And here is a slide showing some pictures of some of our outreach events. I wasn't able to sneak in the one from today. But, um, we have hosted sixteen outplanting events and we have attended six school-based events. And we expect more as the year continues. So it's not over. We still have a lot more months for this year. And so far, we have had a hundred individuals volunteer for our outplanting. So we're very grateful for that. And of these, seven attended more than four outplanting events. So I'm sure if you look at these pictures, you can see consistent common faces and we're very grateful for our volunteers that like to come out. Um, they say they love it every time. So we have to believe them that they really enjoy planting with us. And then looking to the end of twenty twenty-four, um, we have some environmental actions and the process that we're gonna follow for that. So we would like to end the year with two thousand plants, if not more. And the process that will complete that is our fall outplanting season, which will start in August. Um, we want to continue to remove invasive predators and continue to protect Palila core habitats. So that will just be maintaining regular checks and rebates for all of these traps that we have. Um, we want to provide more outreach opportunities outside of outplanting. Monique A. Forest Restoration Project has been very known for outplanting in outreach settings. But my goal is to provide different types of outreach, um, just because I feel like Monique A has so much more to offer than just planting. So my goals for that is to attend more career days, school events, possibly host things like plant ID and bird ID workshops, possibly even predator control events, just so that our community can understand a little more about how predator control works in ways that they can possibly do it themselves. And then the last point is to dig deeper into why Palila populations continue to decline. Um, unfortunately, right now, Unfortunately, right now, it has been determined that there are 300 Palila, and this is through algorithms and surveys that we do regularly. It's not a number we like, however, it is something that we do want to understand a little more why they're not increasing. So the process for that is just continuing to do nest searching and monitoring when we find nests, annual surveys that we do. We're also doing quarterly surveys now, banding. And then we also have, our Wildlife Section has upcoming wildlife demography technicians. And demography, I was like, what does that mean? It's just people who are going to sit on the forest, look at statistics, and kind of understand what's affecting deaths, failures in nests, and things like that. So we're really happy to hear that there will be positions opening up for that. And yeah, we hope that they can help us get a little more clarity on that. But that is all I have. I hope I didn't rush too fast and get a little nervous talking in front of people. But yeah, thanks for listening, you guys. If you have any questions, definitely let me know at the end.
And I wanted to start by saying that I'm not special. I'm not just a young boy who lacked for a while and came home. And if anything, tonight on my intermediary, this represents a lot of other groups that I found on my own after coming home, that have been doing work for me. And I can hopefully put myself in all of those groups just like I do. So I want to start by just talking about that plant right here. It's a plant that my mom planted in our yard, peely grass. And you can see the seeds are clumping together. The word peely can mean to cling. So I think about that word when I think about the word peeling, which can mean a relationship. So it has this flavor of a type association or clinging. And so I want you tonight just to think about your peeling and how you can develop your own personal peeling with nature and our natural world. The thing is, to develop peeling with nature, you have to experience nature, that to walk into nature and have a transformative experience in nature. So tonight, again, I think I hope to talk about three ways you can develop your own personal peeling to our ecological communities closer to home. Three organizations that I have found since moving home are the One Day Outdoor Circle, On Their Trails of Greenways, and Hawaii Public Community Foundation. Through Hawaii Community Foundation, I'm so honored to take an email from Diane Chadway to come right here and to talk to other folks from One Day about the future that we envision for One Day, for One Day Futures. We have conversations, a lot of groups like have these conversations, and then convene on a Saturday to subdivide into further groups to talk about how we can pull you up together and create the type of One Day that we want to see. And so the group that I jumped in and joined, we talked about developing a peeling to third spaces. This idea that the first space is your home, the second space is your place of work, the third space is a place in the community. Hopefully, that's not too expensive, that you can meet people from the community, so a third space. We call ourselves the Third Spaces Group. We started jumping on Zoom pretty relatively to talk about, well, what should we do to create more third spaces in One Day? So we found this really cool website called Park Serv from Trust for Public Land. And what it is, it talks about folks in the United States of America and how close they are within walking distance, a 10-minute walking distance to a park. Next slide, please. So this idea of having a park within 10 minutes walk away from your home is the idea of having nature for everybody, access for all. Not everybody's likely to see how to call it, drive to these beautiful places on a vacation. So Houa Hua County, about 72% of the residents are 10-minute walk away from the park. Where is this? 62% of the residents, 10 minutes away from the park. Where is this? Kilo, 42%? Yeah, there we go. It's like, please, 42% from a park. Next slide, Pa'kua is. Looks like Houa Ka, Houa Ka, 50% of residents within 10 minutes walk from a park. In the jungle, please, for One Day. 5% of our residents within 10-minute walk from the park. So armed with that information, next slide, please. We sent out some surveys, any responses, but not too big of a data field there. But the number one thing that folks from One Day who sent the surveys out, they said they wanted to work with large landowners to improve public access to our landscapes. Next slide, please. We did some back-of-the-nap math, and you add up all the land in One Day that's privately owned, and then all the parks, and it turns out two-tenths of 1% of One Day is parks controlled. So our first event that we wanted to throw was just to bring attention to this and what involved One Day Nature Park with a planting event and a talk story event with Anthony Forman to talk about our first spaces. We had a pretty good turnout. We planted that new grow of trees that you might see if you are in Houa Hua Nature Park. That's my mom, the bottom right-hand corner, shout out. She was there in my stead, actually. I didn't even, I didn't even attend it. Next slide. I want to say this work wasn't possible without One Day Outdoor Circle. We already, we have the best Thursdays in all of One Day. They've been hammering away to create. Next slide. 10 acres in One Day with the biggest collection of Okeha rainbow colors on the planet Earth. And then that blue boat circle within the yellow circle is the new third space for it, there's that they're expanding to as well. So thank you so much to One Day Outdoor Circle for the best Thursday in One Day. One Day Trails and Greenways have been hammering away for 30 years. They're creating trail, next slide, please. 30 years, they have one mile of trail with ideas to go all the way to Kamala Estates, across One Day to the west side as well. Next slide, please. And we get our way all the way to the ocean and all the way farther into the west side. And we do complete that trail just within my man, the access of folks who are going to have a 10-minute walk away from a park has increased from 4.6% to 23.1% just with the trail. Real quick, in our last few weeks, I just wanted to compare two places my mom visited. Aspen, she said you should check them out. Our vision is similar to ours, they're a lot smaller than us. Next slide. But they have an extensive trail system with paved trails, dirt trails, single-track trails, bicycle trails, portal-drive trails. Next slide, please. They have a community forest management plan, invasive species plan, and open space plan. And 92% of the residents live within 10-minute walk from the park. Next slide, please. I thought this was kind of funny, but then the 92% of people who live within 10-minute walk from a park, 100% of the Pacific islanders are 10-minute walk from a park in Aspen. So if you're a Pacific Islander in Aspen, you have no chance to be 10 minutes away from a park. You're all around it in One Day. So I just wanted to give you thinking, and as well as possible, the way you're at, next slide, is developing your peeling with our nature. This Saturday, I am going to be in the nature park at the Grove. Come join me, taking care of that. Our circle is there every Saturday morning. One Day Trails and Greenways dot org, you can join up with us once a month. And then as far as Hawaii Community Foundation, email me. I can connect you with the right people to take over our third space project. Myself, Lee Lee, my co-host, Amanda, Chris Hawkins, all these folks really hammered oil and did the third space work, but we're tapping out. And so it's time for us to pass the torch to someone to do more stuff with the original smartphone, with the ability to create more third spaces in One Day, please. So again, I'm not a special guy. You can just jump into these things like I do. These are just three ways, but develop your peeling, that's what I'm hoping.
Alex, we're going to be Alex Rupier, Alex Rupier, to share all the many things you do.
Please, you're a folk.
Definitely. Good evening. Remember, you're doing a favor. My name's Alex Rupier. I am blessed to be one of three partners for Kamala Heartless. Myself and my fellow operating partner Joshua Greenspan both grew up here in One Day. Lived in the community since we were little kids, and we just love this place. So we started from humble beginnings. Basically, we're playing around in the backyard with the chainsaw mill, and we're now the largest business of our type in the state of Hawaii. We reduce, we reuse, and we recycle on probably the largest scale of our type. Full circle, we provide an alternative to materials that are shipped in every day via container from all over the world. And in doing so, in doing so, we not only create jobs in the community, we circulate money through the local community, the local economy, and we offset just a massive amount of green waste. We estimate that we're taking in somewhere on the order of a million tons of material a year that would otherwise be destined for our landfills or disposed of illegally or destroyed in green waste facilities. So there's a general lack of our type of industry in Hawaii, and we are very blessed to be in partnership in various capacities with not only the US Forest Service, but Department of Forestry and Wildlife, as well as several private landowners to try to create this circular economy where we provide timber products here locally. So we've got a lot of barriers that you can read up on this, but we're making a go of it. We've been doing it for about 20 years now, and we're seeing a big number of lots. Go ahead, next slide, please. So what we don't mill into lumber, we chip or we turn into painter shavings or sawdust mulch, we provide that to various local community associations, including our local school gardens, various nonprofits. And then we also provide amazing other products to them as well. They need garden beds, they need to build an outdoor space, and you know, construction lumber, we provide over the world. Right now, we're milling on order of about 250,000 or feet of lumber here. To give you an idea of what that is, that's about 250 to 300 shipping containers worth of material. And we're doing that all right here, just in one minute now. So one of the unique things about taking logs and turning them into lumber is lumber has a life cycle that is quite lengthy. If we're turning it into furniture, it could be heirloom, it could be hundreds of years. If we're turning it into building material, it could be as high as 50 years. And we're in that process, sequestering that product. Next slide. So we basically try to mill everything we can within grass. I found out some samples, I think they might be circulating around. There's five or six different species there. Every one of those samples came from a tree within 20 miles of us. And most of those trees were brought down because of various reasons, either they were dead or dying, exposed to threat, they came down in a storm. And interestingly enough, I believe only one of the species in that sample back there is actually native. So one of the things we do is we utilize a lot of non-native species, and we utilize a lot of invasive species. So we talked about removal of invasives that affect our forest spring would be. Yeah, we'll take it very carefully. So. So it's been a real challenge because of the high cost of living, the high cost of fuel, the high cost of shipping, everything to compete against other markets, but with a little bit of ingenuity and a lot of support from the community. And I really mean it. I mean, I look around the room and I see support everywhere, from past team members to people that have employed us and contracted with us to provide materials for various projects, to our support from our governmental agencies and our non-government agencies. I mean, we just can't thank everybody enough for all the help that we've received in this process. So next slide, please. We've got a great team, and we've got high retention, and we're proud to provide jobs in the community. Next slide. So forestry is our picture, it really is, and we are sort of the tail end of the whole process. We partnered with Parker Ranch, as Zach had mentioned, to utilize our forestry resources. And these include the harvest of dead and dying native species, but also other non-native species as well. And a portion of the proceeds of the sale of our products go directly back into reforestation efforts. And I'm out of time.
We've just talked about 10 minutes for the questions and answers. I'm going to walk around the mic, so if you have a question, get my attention. But I wanted to start off, Nick, we're out the other day.
10 minutes.
You're telling us about cats, mongooses, and rats. You've touched the relationship with rats. I'll write my phone on the table.
Any kind of wounding that happens to Okeha enables the fungal pathogen to get into the Okeha, and it basically starves the tree. So here, one of the things that I was mentioning to Riley and Nancy was, if you've noticed, all of the Okeha that were planted around the Foodland, Parker Ranch Shopping Center. When they started, there was quite a bit more. A lot of them have slowly died out over the years. And some of the feral cats use those trees as scratching posts. And when they do that, that's all it takes, and that's enough for the pathogen to get into into the tree and infect it.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Then Mahina, one question for you. So when we were with the Kauaia Tree Sanctuary, Nick showed us the amount of water that's running in the stream. Can you just comment on how your work and the work that's planned will increase the amount of stream flow?
That's a great question. As Nick was mentioning earlier, the management plan that we are implementing came out of years and years of conversation and thinking about and talking about and agreeing to where our work should take place. And many of our priority project areas that were identified in that plan are areas that just receive the highest amount of rainfall, which is on the Wenwur side of Kauhala Mountain near the summit. And so by protecting those areas that are, you know, the most intact native forests with the highest rainfall or the most cloud capture that also impacts the headwaters of our streams that feed our valleys and our communities, we, you know, drink fencing and carotid removal, we're helping to ensure that those forest ecosystems remain healthy and are protected so that they can recover and regenerate themselves and continue serving that function for our human communities, but also our stream communities and our green ecosystems as well.
What I'd like to do is focus on a component here, especially something that would be very long time. If you have any questions that you would like to ask, I'm going to hold on to my phone.
Okay, two minutes.
What we want to do is have short questions, long answers.
Short question. I have three Australian whahu. I was all excited about having them until I found out what they were. How do I get rid of them? What's, how to dispose of them?
It's really easy. It's one of the few invasive species, you don't need to decide the tree. You can cut it down and chop off the top, main growing component, and it should die. Yeah, sorry, sorry you guys. They still tell them, "Home people, it's ridiculous." You know, so it's still being thrown out.
Patty, hold on, hold on. Short question.
Okay, I don't know who had the picture, but there was 10,000 Okeha trees planted. How do we know that they don't succumb to raptor heat?
That you, Mahina?
It was Mahina, but we worked collaboratively on these projects. There is no fear for raptor heat, and we just need to keep planting in the hopes that some sort of genetic resistance develops. And our quickest way to do that is putting more trees in the water. Thanks, Zach.
I'll add to that, there is a lot of research that's going on at. I'll I'll add to that. There is a lot of research that's going on at uh at P B R, which is the African Cultural Research Center in Hilo. And at the University of Hawaii at Hilo, and they're studying resistance. And they're in the early stages of trying to develop seed sources of resistant strains. So it will take time, um but uh. If you get an opportunity to visit some of these areas, uh it's quite evident that in these. In the early stages of these findings, there's quite a bit of success. We've had over ninety percent success rate in establishing our tree. With very little mortality, but it's, it's a. We'll see. Time, time will be the judge.
Next question.
Here's another short question. Uh so um mahalo for all of you folks, uh you know, congratulations for stepping up. You know, I remember getting involved with um um water shared protections back in eighty-six, so thank you all. And I I noticed you guys looking at several others inside the room. Thank you all, you folks stepping up for Malama or Aina. So one of them that catch my attention with mitigations uh is the use of herbicides. Uh so uh I was gonna ask that you guys use uh different methods, this is two thousand twenty-four. Get other methods. Uh and the question is. So. Well, I noticed that uh that each of the projects, um that you folks have shared. Uh you you folks are uh in a particular area. Um do you both see in the near future? The other uh adjoining property owners will be a part of the uh mitigation factors you folks provide.
Anybody want to dabble down? Cassandra, is that something that you want to comment on that you're online?
Um I guess that's something that is probably gonna follow up next year for me. Um just because this spring outplanting, we were very fortunate and we didn't plant anywhere that we needed to prep or herb this year. Um for Pu'u Mali, we are having um sections prepped by our operations team. But they're just dredging it out, so we're not using herbicide, we're just dredging out the spots. And that allows us to put the plants directly in there and then fill it in. So I guess we're fortunate in that way. We also, I mean, like Nick said, we we don't want to use herbicide sometimes, it's needed. Um and I definitely think with us moving forward in this time, we'll find better ways to do it without herbicide use, so.
Yeah, just be mindful you guys stay in the watershed, yeah.
I do, I do want to respond to that group, the second point about um additional partners and landscapes. You know, our forests are a forest right now. Um they have solid boundaries and most of those developed land are big private landowners. And one of the really exciting things for me, working for a private landowner, is the opportunity to show. How we can incorporate trees across productive agglons and. And give that knowledge to all the landowners, to replicate it across the landscape. You know, even if a landowner is putting one tree in a paddock. Over a hundred acres, that's a hundred more trees and, you know, it adds up. It's like going to the gym. You're not gonna notice it at first, but at the end it will be built. Um and and it's gonna take time and 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 it's a little bit controversial, but um I I think the future of forests is on. Uh private properties, how how can we do that?
Okay, we have a few questions online. Um. Nick, how are the trees in Kupuka Oe'oe coming along?
They look great after that uh recent rains that we got, but uh it does uh.
Can you share, where is that?
That's in Ula'ua Forest Reserve. Uh it's closer to the Kofalebu Boundary.
Very good. Um Zach, is the ranch gonna plant Mamanui to help the Amila Habitat or just for uh for agroforest?
Uh following the big fire we had in twenty twenty-one, uh we did a press release for a large reforestation project directly adjacent to the Amila Critical Habitat. Um that project has been in the planning stages long before I started at the ranch. We are starting to pave one of that project this year, uh which would be about six seventy-five acres of reforested Mamanui forest.
Uh Nadina, has K W P considered the collection of willow willow seeds below the sanctuary?
Oh, uh yes, I would love to see more willow willow in our landscape. Unfortunately, uh many of our. Uh partner landowners have willow willow on their land, uh so that uh an area that we can definitely grow. Uh we collect more seeds um for and grow more of uh to plant and on the Grand Kohala.
Cassandra, were you able to answer that one big question that that we talked about earlier in the day about trapping? That you have to deal with? Is that something you could speak to briefly, please?
Yeah, yeah, I I will definitely email her back. I think I can give her a good explanation online, but like overall, just in general, you know, um we. The traps we use are New Zealand-based and the purpose for that is mainly just because New Zealand has been so successful. In removing invasive predators that do protect their native um animals that they want to protect. So we do follow them as many other projects do, and there is a lot of success. Of course, there will always be outliers. Um you know, sometimes the animals that we're targeting just happen to just try to reach in or something and. There will always be outliers in any type of work we do. Um but New Zealand is regulated by the Animal Welfare Act. And it is something that even us as employees, you know, we follow protocols. And there's certain ways that you place bait in traps, um and regular checks and things also prevent those kinds of things, so. Um yeah, unfortunately, we can't control everything when it comes to trapping or planting and things like that, but we do our best to keep it nice and clean and efficient.
Mahalo, Cassandra. I think I have one more question. Is there else one?
Hey Riley, can I have? One thing to your question. Um so the Kohala Watership Partnership was started, it was voluntary coalition of. Most of the private landowners and uh the state actually wasn't invited to the initial meetings. It was Kahua, it was Pono Holo, it was Parker Ranch. Um they they were the instigators of it. And then once they're like, okay, yeah, I think we can trust the state to not come in and bugger this whole thing up. Then they invited us to the table and then we helped to facilitate it. So it was the ranches that started it.
Thanks, Nick. Last question.
So where can local residents go to buy local species to plant in their yards? Because there doesn't seem to be enough right now.
There's a handful of um nurseries islandwide. Uh it does take you doing your research, just like anything, if you're gonna spend your hard earned dollars, is to go and do the research to find. What it is that you're looking for. Uh state tree nursery also can provide that. We have an online portal that you can make orders. Uh we have a limited um menu, if you would. Uh but uh if you want to come and see it, I recommend coming. You can make an appointment. But you can also come to the Harbor Day Sale in November, uh which is quite popular. Uh get there early. And I've seen some of the stuff that they're already doing, uh it's gonna be fabulous this year.
And Nick, how much do you sell the trees for?
Way too cheap.
If I could see Mike, Michael at Pukalani Stables on Saturdays, he's selling more and more.
There's quite a bit of vendors out there and we have contractors on uh various different islands that can provide uh other opportunities as well.
You know, I'd like to end this session. I want to thank all Hawaii Kate.
I just want to say a good resource too is flyingpono.org. They uh make sure that the nursery is certified Pono. And they don't introduce species as well.
Maybe a lot of that information we can put on the one day news station as well, so. I want to thank, I want to present this evening. Thank you so much for spending your time evening with us. Um I'd like to also acknowledge uh my wife Nancy for putting this together, you know, speakers. Being very resilient about getting different people up here and taking the time to go out there and do all these.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here. That was a great meeting. I hope you learned something. And we look forward to seeing you next month for our Canada Forum. I'd like you to sound off on the eleventh at five o'clock. Please be safe and thank you again for your support.